So I'm calling the meeting of the planning board to order. Uh, for Thursday, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, we are virtual tonight. Both due to COVID and the fact that um I'm out of the office on vacation. And we have four matters, none of which requires us to be in person. And the first of which is a continuation of the public hearing for the tree planting plan of the Spring Hill subdivision, Margaret.
Yeah, thank you. Um, we received an email from Dan Willett, who's the representative for Spring Hill, asking us to um, continue this hearing until the April meeting. Um, he says, Margaret, good morning. I hope this message finds you well. I'd like to request an extension of the requested amendment. Regarding the Spring Hill farm trees, we are working with a registered landscape architect, but have yet to receive the stamp plans requested by the planning board. I am very confident we'll ha- we will have a submission ready for April's meeting. Thanks and best regards, Dan Willett. So the, if the board could just motion to uh continue this hearing until April thirteenth at seven P M.
Do I have a?
I motioned that we move the Spring Hill farm uh issue to the next, continue it to our next meeting, which is uh um, April thirteenth.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Week says I.
Uh, Pastor Lewis is I.
Clay.
Says yes.
Woodland.
Yes.
Anderson.
I.
Thank you.
May I, may I ask a question now uh on this matter? Um, cause I wasn't at the last meeting and maybe it was disgusting. I haven't sober looked at the meeting minutes, but um, does that mean that there's no way at this annual town meeting, the street can be approved for acceptance?
Uh, no, Rick, they have not even applied for acceptance.
Okay, so we're not even in that ballpark.
No, we're not in that, we're not in that stage yet. They would have to um uh say they have to send a request to us and all the paperwork and everything. They haven't done that.
Hey, Rick. Thank you, thank you, Margaret.
Rick?
Yes?
I got the same pencil. As you do.
It's been. Rick, I was gonna say that um, we didn't do anything substantive on this last meeting. It was just a continuance.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just continued, Margaret. The next item is administrative, I believe. Let me see if I.
It is, yep. So I'm going to share. I sent you the iron rail. Um, it's the scope of service. I'll just um, let me just explain what's going on. The um, iron rail property, uh, the, the select board has authorized using some of those ARPA funds to do a study of the iron rail property. It's mostly, it's like a highest use study. It's not necessarily a feasibility study because that would mean there would be a project in place, but it's not a feasibility study. It's mostly a uh, we're going to hire a consultant to um, do a study on what the best use of that property would be. Um, economically for the community and um, what's its best use. So I have given you a copy of the scope that we're using uh that we're proposing. So we're going through this right now with the iron rail commission. Um, do you uh, did you all get a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you want me to bring it up? It's, it's, so I was asked at the last meeting with um the town administrator, the assistant town administrator, Peter, I think you were there uh and get um we just talked, we're talking about what the scope of services should be for this project, and they asked me to share it with the planning board. So I don't know if any of you have any questions about it, if you looked at it, if you have questions.
The only question I have is how it relates to what's going on with the master plan. So what's the timing on it and will it be ready to be part of the mass planning process or is it, I'm, I'm it would be bad if it came in after that was done, you know, I just wonder what.
Yeah, so we certainly hope that this gets done before the master plan and that this information can be incorporated into any of the master plan recommendations that come out. The uh, we just need to get this scope out and there's been some, you know, discussion back and forth about how it should be worded and what kind of um, information we want them to give us um, the consultant. So we think it should take no more than two months to do this. And I think the master plan should be done by that, or it won't be done by them and that we can incorporate this into it. Um.
And there's, yeah, for study already.
I'm sorry?
There's already funding for the study.
There is, yeah, yeah. They voted to use ARPA funding for it, so.
Right, you said that.
Funding's in place, yeah. Um, yeah, but if you have any questions about it, let me know. We, we, I think we're having a meeting with the Iron Rail Commission next week. I, I'm not sure of the date yet, but I think they'll meet next week to go over this and approve the scope. Then we can con- connect with an engineering firm to do the work.
Of, as in if there's no by members about this?
Yeah, but anytime, if at any time you have questions or, Peter, I think you'll probably go to the Iron Rail meeting, won't you? You've, you've been a little bit involved in this. I don't know if you have any comments or thoughts on that.
I will, I think. Um. I think it's a good study. Let's, um, it'll be done uh hopefully in a couple of months. And um, that will allow it to be folded into the master plan.
That's great.
This is it. I, I'm sorry, I just found it. Um. I don't know if you wanna, if you wanna see.
Unless people really wanna see it, I don't think we'd need it.
Okay, I won't bother, alright.
If you all, if, if, Margaret, when is the deadline by which you need comments on this? If someone looked through it and had something to say that.
Yeah, if you wanted to make comments or wanted, you know, get, send it to me by next week. I would say by next Tuesday or Wednesday. If you do have any thoughts that you wanna share, I'll let you know when that meeting is gonna be held. And if anyone wants to attend it, I think it's gonna be in person. From what I heard, they, the Iron Rail was meeting on Zoom, but I think they wanna go back in person. But I, so it's one day, I think it might be Tuesday, actually, next week, but.
Margaret, it is Tuesday, March fourteenth.
Oh, Catherine, good, thank you. So you have that date, they did post it?
I don't know if they posted it, but I was made aware of the meeting.
Okay.
Tuesday, March fourteenth in the evening.
Six o'clock, I believe, in person.
In person, okay, so it'll be at Town Hall.
Yeah, they thought I did the minutes for it, but I don't.
If you um, if you have any comments or thoughts, you can send them to me over the weekend if you have a chance to look at this.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, let me just move the agenda. Hey, um, the next item that we have is the discussion on the master plan progress. I think you all should have received my email today with the new schedule. Did everyone see that?
Yep.
Okay. No, um.
New schedule.
Let me just grab it. Um. So the um that's it. Can you see anything?
Uh, I can. It looks like it's David Willett's.
Okay, it's still Dan's thing, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Anyway, so the master plan is progressing. March thirteenth is the deadline for the meetings in a box, for the survey and for um the crowdsourced map. We've had some pretty decent um response. I think, did you all get the um the last response for this? Um, I mean, I'm sorry, the, the list of it's like a um, Alana checks in with us and tells us how many responses we've gotten. Had you gotten that, a copy of that email? I think I sent that to everybody.
Yeah, it seemed pretty low. Is that not, it was like two or three percent response rate or something?
Yeah, it's not a great.
So how many, how many in, what's the number? In terms of surveys?
With a hundred and seventy-seven or something? Like, that number kinda stuck in my head.
Well, so that, so when we did our ARPA survey, we got a hundred and seventy-four, so it's probably all the same people plus two.
So we've gotten um, a hundred and seventy-two responses to the survey with a forty-one percent completion rate. We've um.
Does that mean that only forty-one percent of the people who started the survey finished it?
That's what I think it means, Dan.
Okay.
Um. The hundred and six submissions on the crowd map, we've had twenty-one meetings in a box with a hundred and ten unique participants, which, which isn't bad.
And what your survey is the same people who went to the meetings in the box or addition.
We don't know for sure.
Right.
Can you see that? Weekly engagement check-in email?
Yep.
So um, here's what she sent us um, on the sixth. Um. She says they look good, but she encouraged us to push out, push, you know, push some more outreach for the survey, which we did. We sent another email. Um, we also sent, I don't know, did anyone get a water bill this, this month? Did anyone look at their water bill?
I got a water bill. I didn't see anything in it.
I didn't either.
Come on. Your water bill should have a, a flyer in it. Nope.
I didn't get it. Get one, a flyer in it. I got a water bill. I can assure you of that, Margaret, but I didn't get a flyer in it.
Hmm.
Wow, okay, I feel sad about that.
Which is interesting because that, the, the community member who sent in the concerns said that she did get a flyer in her water bill, I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they should have gone in everybody's water bill.
I feel like there's been a, a, a lot of effort around trying to get participation, at least in the meetings in the box.
Yeah, we've really been trying. I mean, we're doing um the, you know, the social media pushes every, every few days, actually, Kate.
When?
Michelle, yeah.
Mari, when did the town warrants go out?
Uh, oh, they're actually being printed.
Maybe you could put something in that.
Can we do an insert?
Yeah.
Well, let me see if I can. I haven't checked on that. We are gonna do a flyer at town meeting. Will be a town meeting and I think that the um, Roger, the, the moderator may let somebody from the boards, you know, say something. I think Joanne or Anne, you know, are you gonna be at town meeting? Is everyone going?
I'm planning on April first, right?
Yeah.
The hu- the hundred and seventy-two people that completed the survey will be at town meeting, don't worry.
Right, right.
Good.
So what my question, Margaret, is should we push out these, a couple of these deadlines? For the, you know, for the survey completion or the crowd map or we can't?
I don't think we can. The consultants aren't giving us that option.
They need to forward, they need to move out of where they are, they're.
Yeah, because they've got, they've got to get all of this information put together, so they're gonna.
I, sorry, I'm wondering if there's another twist. Is there another uh public forum?
Session, right?
Thing that we encourage, maybe, maybe we need to move out of one mode and into a new mode to, I'm not sure. That the problem is you can lead the horse to water, but you can't make it drink. You can set up as many public meetings and meetings in a box and the library and this and that, and if people don't come, they don't come. And I don't know, we can't leave them there by the nose, so. But I do think maybe there's the possibility of um, trying a different, you know, another, another public meeting to, to collect some of this information? Is that a possibility?
We do have another commu- two more community forums scheduled, uh, well, not, they're not scheduled yet. So right now we're in phase two and that's where they collect information, um, input. They're gonna take all of that input, put it together and then present it, and then you have another opportunity for further input. So we'll be doing more, um, we won't do another survey, but the planning board will have a meeting and then you're gonna you know, break into smaller groups um, who, with whoever's there with master plan and, and planning board will break into groups and go over all of these sections and then the public will get invited to comment again also. And then there'll be more public forums.
What is the schedule for that?
I don't ha- I, I have um, I have the schedule for um, let me just grab that. The sched- we don't have a schedule for um, the community forums. We have a May second and a May twenty-eighth meeting. Um, March, April, May.
Of the committee.
Second, and May twenty-third, yes, for the master plan committee to meet with the consultants.
Okay. I'm just thinking that if you go into the summer, you may have, you know, you, you risk low attendance because people will be away. But maybe I'm mistaken.
I, 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 I think you may be a little bit right there, Anne, and, and we, we, we do need to figure out the problem of reaching constituents is a mega problem right now with the collapse of newspapers and the fragmentation of internet searching. Um, so we need to maybe look at another way of reaching people, and I hate to go back to snail mail and everybody's mailbox. That does seem just kinda archaic, but um, that might be the only way we can say that we've communicated with everybody.
It's so unusual that it's compelling. You know, you don't get.
He would think, but we're on the planning board, so we're also interested in that to begin with, right?
So if we were to put an insert in the warrant or do a full town canvas mailing, what are we gonna say? I mean, if the deadlines, that's the reason why I was, I was asking about the survey, if the survey's gonna close.
Right, well, that's the problem.
Yeah, unless we kick it out a, a bit, but.
Yeah, I wouldn't be focusing on the warrant right now. That's gonna, that's, that doesn't give time to wordsmith a few, you know, something doesn't. That's gonna go out in a week.
We, I mean, we have a flyer that's out there now that we put in the water bills and nobody got one. I can't believe that. Um. That we put in the water bills that is just kind of a general, go to the website, go, you know, check out what's going on. Send your input. People can still send input throughout this whole process. They, you know, they can continue to send us their comments and thoughts and ideas. Um. It's not like the existing conditions report, you know, we're kinda done with that. They, we're gonna be responsible for making those changes, but um this, this next phase of it, phase two, which is what we're in and we're getting ready to close, is considered the first part of public engagement. Where, you know, the survey, the crowd map, but once people start to see all of these things, I think that people will then be able to comment on those, cause the consultant's gonna put all that together for us and say, look, here's what, here's what the residents have been saying. Let's can, let's talk about this now, alright? Let's see, uh, are there any? I mean, do we think we're gonna come up with something completely different that somebody says? I mean, I don't know. But it'll all be, it'll all be there, it'll be packaged, you'll get it. April seventeenth is the deadline for them to package all of these comments together. And then you start to look at them and say, okay, what are people saying here? And then we have another opportunity for people to s- to look at that and add what they want.
Yeah, my strategy might be to, to wait for that, to plan, so when that document's released to the town and it's been, it's been consumed by you know, town leaders, that then we do a big push to get that data out and a feedback mechanism on that, because that's concrete, right? That's something, it's not just city, what do you think?
Yeah.
This is what somebody said or suggested.
Buick or multipurpose room or the, you know what I mean, like, or, for the gym, something, this is a big deal, it's now time, you know?
And I, you know, that's something we can facilitate ourselves. We don't, you know, we, we, we now understand what the consultants are doing. And if there's, we wanna go over and above that, I think we certainly can. And I think we might be seeing that's the case in Wyndham, that we need to go over and above what they're, you know, what they're looking for. So we get this document, it's a good idea, Rick, we get it, and then we plan a huge, not huge, you know, a big it's one gathering, get people in it, yeah, do a campaign, say we're gonna, we want your comments on this document and then bring them into a meeting, get it online, we can do all that ourselves.
May- maybe, maybe we devote a planning board meeting to it?
Oh, there will be planning board meetings devoted to this. Um, and the, I could talk to the consultant, they were it, they don't look at the planning board meeting as being like a community forum setup.
Right, right, right.
Planning board meeting.
Right.
You know, taking in information and then asking for people's comments, but I think we could do a community forum.
I like Rick's idea.
Yeah.
It's a good one.
Okay.
Mari, can I just ask, was, is the deadline today or is it the sixteenth?
No, it's the uh thirteenth, it's Sunday. They pushed it out a little bit.
So the survey deadline is the thirteenth?
Yeah, so the survey's still open until Sunday.
Okay.
So if you're talking to anyone, see if you can get them to do it. I'm assuming you've all taken the survey.
Oh yeah, show of hands.
Show of hands.
Okay.
Dan, do I see Dan?
I have four days left, you just said.
Yeah, he's.
You do, of course, you have plenty of time.
I have been to a meeting in a box.
Oh, good, alright. Alright, um.
You should read, a- actually, planning board members, if you go on to the uh, if you go on to the crowdsourced map and read some of the comments people have made, I think you'll also get a flavor of what people are thinking, not just this here, but they make comments as to why, why not? So it's also good reading.
Yeah, need to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, I wanted to tell you too, I had a meeting yesterday um at the high school with some students. It was really great. They were very engaged and they had a lot to say. Yeah.
Uh, one thing that, in reading the community member's statement, um, I, I don't know her uh personally. Uh, there was a couple of aspects to it and one was about kind of notice, and I understand her point about her efforts in the past with the W V I S. There was another element to it though that was that uh, it kinda struck me more, which is I tried to participate and my input didn't register. And obviously, none of us were there. I, I, I've only heard positive things about the meeting in the box, including from my wife who attended with none other than planning board member Rick Woodland, and it sounds like they had way too much fun discussing the ins and outs of the town. Um, but I'm just wondering, not to diminish the community members' statements, has anyone else experienced or heard about anybody feeling like they tried to participate, but their input wasn't registered? I haven't heard anything like that otherwise.
I have not. I've heard my, my neighbor ran a meeting in the box and had really positive experiences with it and um.
Me too.
Nothing but good.
Yeah, and we haven't had any other negative comments really about participation. They, you know, this person had some other issues, I think, in their email also, so.
I think, I think everyone in the town, of course, is entitled to state their opinion about not only the plan and what we want from Wyndham, but the process, so, you know, I'm not belaboring or disparaging that. Um. It does seem to me that um, I mean, I, I, for, I, I'm imagining because I've heard um, other people expressing different opinions about many of the topics that were in the letter, so. I mean, it's, it, it's great. I mean, it, it, it's a good thing for town members to be able to say what they think and for us to consider it and for the master plan advisory committee to consider it. Um, I, I think that's positive. And I do, I do know that every meeting I've ever been to um, that has to do with long-range planning or the financial well-being of the town, concerns are expressed about the lack of commercial development and, and the taxpayer.
Yeah.
Um, so that's, that is definitely a theme running through, it, it's ever since I've moved to town, it's been a theme. So um, and I know personally neighbors in my little, on my little circle who have moved out of town because they've retired and they can't afford it anymore. So I do know that, that that's a concern. Um, but on the other side, I'm certain that there are also people who value the current character of the town and would like to keep it that way, and we're just gonna have to figure out how to thread the needle.
And no one's saying those two things can't happen some, at the same time, right? That's
Right.
People, it's, because we're in a, we're an error of extremes, that everybody's polarized, either on this side or that side, but there really is a way to be in the middle.
Right. I love the Iron Rail Study Committee Commission, you know, what is the best use of that town property because you know, believe there's something there we could do.
Yeah. Um, I wanna let the board know, I did respond to that resident and I suggest, I you know, was sympathetic to their concerns and said that they could absolutely send me whatever comments or ideas or thoughts that they felt were not listened to at, at that meeting, that they could send them to me and I would make sure that the consultant got those. Um, and she, the, the person did respond and said that they would um, get back to me, they were gonna write something today. So as soon as I get that, I'll get it into the consultant.
Thank you, Margaret.
Yep.
Terrific.
Uh, okay.
Is there anything else on the master plan? I mean, I would encourage um, just continuing to move a pace. I know that, you know, it's, people are feeling like we need to get more input, but rather than stall, I would, I would think that the thing to do is to continue to move forward and come up with new strategies for get input if we feel like the current approach isn't working.
Um, our next master plan meeting is March twenty-ninth, and that meeting will not have consultants there. I think that'll be a good opportunity for the committee, the master plan committee and any of you members who want to attend to discuss that next strat, you know, next step, strategies for moving forward that we can do outside of what the consultant's doing for us.
I'm gonna do my best to get to that.
Okay.
So Anne, this isn't on the master plan progress itself, but it's a comment related to it that um, and, uh, Margaret, I brought this up briefly at the um, greatest states meeting that, that we had, so w- w- we have other things that are happening um, that we need, I think we need to push forward on either parallel or whatever track it is that there seems to be a lot of, well, we've got the master plan brewing and this is all gonna be part of the master plan and a lot of things are sort of getting kicked down the, the road that there are things I think we can address before we get to the end of the master plan and fold it in at that time, so that's just a sort of a general commentary.
You wanna, when we get to that point in the agenda, report out on that meeting? That would be excellent.
Yep. I don't think it's on the agenda, but.
No, it's gonna be, you know, matters not thought of.
Actually, it's gonna be on the discussion for zoning amendments.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's gonna be just a little discussion we need to have. Um.
Which is, yeah.
Yes.
Say that again, Anne, I'm sorry.
It's not quite yet, but coming up on the.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, so I, I, I mean, if anyone has questions about the master plan, um, you know, I, just let me know. And uh.
Okay. Next item is sorry, I'm scrolling, the MBTA Communities Regulation Update?
Mm-hmm. So we had our kickoff meeting with the consultant, who is also J M Goldson. Um, and Dan was part of that group and um Dan, I don't know if you wanna give a little update or?
Yeah, sure, um, so that, it was on the twenty-third um, of February by Zoom. I thought it was a productive meeting. We had um, I'm not gonna remember everybody who was there, but um, yeah, building, our zoning enforcement um, person was there, town administrator, I think, or assistant town administrator. Um, the consultant, Peter and I were there, Margaret, you were there, was anyone, am I missing anybody?
Uh, no, that was everyone, Joe.
Okay.
Joe and um, yeah.
Sorry about not getting the names. I usually write them down, but I didn't for some reason. Um. So it was, it was really kind of a walkthrough of, okay, the guidelines are up and these are the requirements that we have to satisfy and these are the options for going forward. It was, it was pretty general. There was a little bit of confusion about what some of the numbers were in the presentation from the consultant. Um, but we've been able to pin down that our number is three sixty-five. And where that comes from is, it is twenty-five percent of our housing stock, so um, as an MBTA So as an MBTA community, we have to at a minimum meet that number, so. Our housing stock is fourteen sixty, so twenty five percent of that is three hundred and sixty five units. It it's a little unclear to me what the total size of the district is supposed to be. There there were a couple of ways to measure it, but. If if you took the total of the developable, developable land area in the whole town. Which is a hundred and eleven acres, it needs to be twenty percent of that, which gives us. Twenty two point two acres within a half mile. Um, I believe, but there was also a twenty four acre number that was thrown out there, so. Again, that was one of the confusing parts. Margaret, did you follow that?
Yeah, I found it a little confusing. They talked about one point five percent of developable area.
Right.
Fifty acres, yeah, so.
And then there was another number that was thrown out there that it was something like. This may have been in a follow up email that it was like, you have to have four point eight or five point eight acres at a minimum within. Our contiguous or something within the, within our half mile district. So needless to say, we're asking the consultant to clarify some of these points, but. We were able to confirm after the fact that it is three sixty five. There was a lower number that was thrown out. I think it was two fourteen or two nineteen. We had no idea where that came from and I don't think that that's correct. I don't, I don't think we're gonna be able to go below three sixty five. But we did ask. When are we gonna be able to look at some of these scenarios? And I think she's going to have a few of them. For us at the next meeting. Margaret, is that right?
Yeah, she, we're gonna meet April fifth and she's going to do that. She's looking at. What our housing capacity number was, and then she was also gonna look at how much of those we, the Gordon College units.
Yes, she got back to us and said those were not counted in our fourteen sixty, because those are institutional.
Okay.
So. But anyway, I don't, we haven't really advanced the ball on the main questions and issues. Dave, I know you raised the. The whole, what's the cost benefit here? What's the balancing act? Um, we did ask. You know, wh- what happens if we fail to comply? You know, what are the consequences? And we went through the three. Programs, Mass Works Infrastructure, Housing Choice Grants. And local, local capital funds projects. And there was a question as to whether we get funding from any of these things.
Um, yeah.
And she was gonna look into that further, so. We talked about a few particular areas. Um, one of which was around the now existing Housing Authority. Uh, which is within the half mile district. There there really are not a lot of options. There's, there's kind of the. There's an area off of Main Street, sort of near Pingree. Which is mostly single family residential developed already. And then there's, everybody's sort of familiar with what that semicircle is like. So that is. That's the gist of it. So we're waiting for more information and hopefully we will have. A couple of proposed areas from them in early April.
Thank you for that report.
Dan, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Yep.
So what if, so you have a number of units you need to build within so many feet of the train station, right? What if your community, I'm not saying Wyndham, but hypothetically, what if your community doesn't have the land near there to build on? Do you have to like, or you only have like two acres? Do you have to build a twenty story building with four units per floor?
But it's not that you have to build it, it's that you have to allow it to be built.
It's a zone, you have to zone for it. So. But to answer your question, Rick, I think in that situation. They allow for you to put it elsewhere in your town. Um, if you like, if you physically can't do it within the half mile, let's say like. You know, it's all wetland or something like that. Then you you pick another location, but that brings up another point. So the minimum density is fifteen units per acre. But there's nothing that prevents us from creating a zoning district that allows for a higher density than that. So, for example, if we wanted to zone, I think. Like a two acre area that allowed for, I don't know, thirty units per acre or something like that. Or higher, you know, you you're talking most likely like a bigger type apartment building type thing. You could do that. As long as you meet your, whatever your limit, your threshold.
In order to capture the threshold, but it would need to be more than a two acre area.
Yeah, I know. It it wouldn't necessarily have to be fifty is what I'm saying, or or twenty five or whatever.
Can I make a point, please?
Yes.
Yeah, Peter, feel feel free to fill in what I missed too, because you were there.
So I've. Had a very brief discussion with Margaret. If you go into the Hamilton Wyndham Train Station and go behind Crosby's. And the CBS. There's a ton of land there. And when you look at. The amount of cars that are actually parked. There's a big space back there where you could put. The right housing.
Is that state land? Is that MBTA land or is that?
Some of it's MBTA and some of it's the folks who own Crosby's.
Yeah.
Yes, that's the area that backs up to the Housing Authority.
Yeah, that's, I think, the area that you're talking about, Dan?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just, I just recommend that all of you go into that. Uh, that station.
And go. He's talking about. A different piece of land, not the Housing Authority, but he's talking about literally behind. Like if you go to the train station and and turn to the left. He's talking about that expansive parking lot and the space behind there, isn't that right?
In other words, the MBTA parking lot.
But you know what? That's Hamilton land.
No, it's not. It's Wyndham.
Well, wait, are you talking about the existing parking lot?
Yeah.
Well, that's the station.
Yeah, that's part of the station.
Part station and it's part Crosby's.
Let me show you on the map. I think I I have a map up. Let me see if you guys can see this.
And it's definitely Wyndham.
Can you see the map?
Yep.
The map, yes.
Are you referring to this?
Can you zoom in, please?
Yep. Can you, is it this property here?
Can you get that little blue thing to go away?
I think I can.
The pull down, yeah.
My gosh.
Just click off of it.
Yeah, I'm trying to. There it goes. Um, my screen just looks really wonky right now. Um, okay. So this is the property right here, this yellow. Can you see it?
Yep.
Okay, is that the one you're referring to?
Plus twenty two.
Who owns twenty one?
Twenty one is owned by Hamilton, hold on. Hamilton Wyndham LLC. Which I think they are the ones that own Crosby's.
Yeah, I think that's right.
This is the.
And then who owns twenty two?
This one right here?
Yep.
That is owned by. Eight Walnut Lane.
Okay, sorry, that's presidential. All I'm telling you is if you go back and go behind CBS. And go to the far left corner and just stand there, there's a fence and there's on your right, if you're looking north. There's just all this empty land and then to your left is the parking lot. And and the cars require or the the space required to cover the cars that that are that use that lot. Plus, there's another lot that's behind the liquor, next to the liquor store, which is MBTA parking. Most of that, most of that area can be used for. Um, fulfilling our MBTA requirements. And it's, it's like, oh, well. What a perfect place to do it.
Well.
I'm driving you crazy, Margaret. What's the matter?
No. It, I don't know if it would be sufficient for us to just say we're gonna zone this for MBTA housing. Um, it it really has to be a a larger area.
I think, yeah, one of the problems is you can't, I don't think spots own one piece of property like that. Because it's too much benefit to one individual property owner.
It'll be an overlay and we'll say if you're in a certain area and you have enough. Lot area, you can build multifamily up to this amount, you know. And if you have an acre, you, we will say you can build fifteen, you know, units, but. It'll, it all has to be worked out. To me, it's, it is rather confusing to, you know, to figure out how this is all gonna pan out, but. That's definitely a spot.
I'm not a lawyer and I would, and there's a good reason for that, because I suck as a lawyer. But if you can put all the housing in a spot, part of the land is MBTA. Owned and the other is whoever, Hamilton Wyndham LLC.
Yeah.
Um, so you effectively do exactly what they want. And, you know, just say screw it to all these other density issues and all that. Um, why wouldn't? Why wouldn't they say, yeah, that's actually really good?
Uh, because it's not, it's not like forty B, it's not like we have to create so much housing. It's that we just have to allow for housing. And.
I I I get it, so why don't we allow for housing there?
Yeah.
Yeah, but. But look, I mean, let's say that that spaced like somehow twenty, twenty one, twenty two. I don't know, which is pretty close to. All those marijuana leaves or what's going on down there. Um, if they can even build there. So in theory, let's say that comes out to be. Twenty acres. And let's say that somebody came in and and paid the price that no one could refuse, and so you had potentially three hundred. Units go in there. And so now all of a sudden you have a thousand new residents. I'm using what crazy numbers, I realize. That are sitting right there. That is. And by the way, we don't know if.
Mind boggling, yeah.
Two thousand on the other side of that line that Hamilton decides to plop down there. So now you got three thousand new residents right there. That is. Trajectory changing for this area.
Can I just point out that you can't do that physically because you don't have. You'd have to build a sewage treatment system.
Right.
For that to occur.
So I've always wondered about this. Everyone's always said, okay, dot, 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 Title Five. So. If, for example, does it, you know, I realize we don't have to build these units, but to Rick's earlier point, I think it was Rick's earlier point. There has to be a reasonable ability to build at this level of density in the area that we designate as the zone. Isn't that correct? And does, if so, does that include a Title Five? Potential?
Title Five is septic. You can't do that kind of density on a septic system.
Septic.
Those are two different questions. So when I was answering Rick's question, it was like, we can't just zone, say, wetland where you know you can't. Build, right? But that's different from saying, let's say there's a zone here with, you know, twenty one, twenty, twenty two. Portions of twenty nine to thirty one, that whole little puzzle piece there that's not wetland. Let's, let's say that was a possible zone, right? So our job is just to create a district where it says it's by ride zoning for up to whatever we have to meet. That doesn't mean that a developer could actually do it, because one, there's the sewage issue, two, there's the water issue. Right, you know, three, you 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 may have traffic access issues, so. Um, those are, those are different baskets of issues.
Got it.
But there is, there's also an argument that says if you just limit it to twenty one, twenty two, twenty. It's not realistic because you you you, you can't as a physical matter. Get it done there.
That kind of piggybacks on my concern when someone said you could make this somewhere else in your town. You know what I mean? You could. If you can't fit it near the train station, you can designate another area. Uh, and if we start doing that, then I think we're gonna have even bigger issues about trying to squeeze it in.
Well, I I think based on what they told us. If we only have to put a five acre contiguous contiguous parcel within a half mile, I'm pretty sure we can do that. Without, without seeing their models yet. I mean, if you just scroll down on that map a little bit. Um, Margaret, so like down here, so this is the Housing Authority right off of Lartz Lane. So there, I mean, there's a lot of lands between that and twenty one.
And so far, I'm only saying on the east side of the train tracks.
In other words, you could read.
Go ahead, Rick.
We've only talked about the east side of the train tracks. We haven't talked about any overlay on the, on the, by right. On the left side of the train.
Yeah, well, that's what they're doing for us. They're, they're, they're supposed to be coming up with, I think, three. Proposals for us to look at at the next meeting.
So maybe we should table this discussion until we have something to look at. If I could move us along, I would like to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And let me bring that up. Thank you for that discussion. It was excellent. Here it is. Great.
Boulder Lane.
Yeah, so Boulder Lane. Um, you all know, um, there's been an application made to the city of Beverly. For a warehouse, a contractor's warehouse. On the Beverly side of, at the end of Boulder Lane.
So not pot farm. I was interested, not a pot farm. I was interested in that.
No, they didn't get approved for that. They never got their approval there, so.
Well, I guess if you like, absolutely. Destroy the area without having gotten a permit, but you might not get your.
They did cut down a lot of trees.
Yeah.
Brutal.
They, they asked for continuance. That hearing was supposed to be Monday night. We did send a letter with the help of town council. Uh, town council's still looking at the legal aspects of Boulder Lane. So one thing that we've determined pretty much is. And Dan, you can back me up with your land use law hat. They're asking to do a commercial development in Beverly. But they have to access through Wyndham on Boulder Lane, which is zoned all residential. And you can't access commercial development through a residential zone.
Oh.
Yeah.
Or vice versa.
Yeah.
That's a Massachusetts funky thing.
Well, there's case law. Dan, you sent me that case law. There has been case law that's identified this as something that can't be done, so. We've let them know that. They never brought it up, as far as I know. I don't think Beverly brought it up to them or the applicants brought it up to Beverly. Um, so we're, we just wanted to bring that up to them. We've also had conservation look at it and they're concerned about. If they do anything on Boulder Lane, they're gonna hit some conservation issues.
I saw that.
Yeah, plus the work that they're doing in Beverly may somehow impact the wetlands in Wyndham. So we've, you know, we're just telling them we have these concerns. They've continued that meeting to March twenty third, I think.
I saw all the, the town letters to expressing issues with the roadway plan.
Okay.
Other than the zoning issue.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so there are definitely issues. If they do want to proceed, I mean, we're not saying Wyndham's not in. Really in favor of them developing that roadway if they wanted. I mean, if this, if this developer wants to improve. Boulder Lane to a point where everyone could take advantage of it in some way, I think that might not be a bad thing. But he'll have to go through the proper channels if that's the case.
They'll have to get it rezoned, it sounds like.
Right, we'd have to get it rezoned. Um, rezoned and then he'd have to go through the permitting for the road.
That, that, that assumes that it's inconsistent with what the zoning bylaw is, the use restrictions, which I think it is, but.
No.
There's, yeah, the big however is, is this a situation where somebody's gonna put in infrastructure that we might want?
Right. Yeah. Um, there are also the, the Brady's who own that land, who who actually own. Who who actually own where Boulder Lane goes over from Grapevine, they have some issues too. And they're, they're, they have an attorney who's working on it, so. It's one of those, let's, let's wait and see what happens. I haven't heard any. I don't have any indication which way the Beverly Planning Board is looking. I know that they're um. I think their fire department or no, Salem Beverly Water Board was concerned about it. The Beverly Transportation um. Committee or something. I think they said it was okay as long as.
What was the water, what was the water board's concern? I'm sorry. It seems like something that wouldn't use a lot of water, so.
I know it's not, I don't know if it's the use of water or.
It's the, it's the fire extinguisher system with sixteen separate drains. If it could, if triggered, it could have substantial contamination because I do believe that this is the southernmost tributary to the Ipswich River.
Yeah, I think that.
Thank you. That's helpful.
What's also, um. I don't know if the fire extinguishers, but it is the the drains are concerned about leaching um fuels, waste oils, whatever. Because that wetland connects to Longham, which connects to Wenham Lake.
Correct. Okay, great. That's helpful.
So uh we'll, we'll kind of wait and see. I'll plan on attending that meeting on the, I think it's the twenty-eighth of March. So I'll go to that meeting in Beverly. And if it's an in-person meeting, if anyone else wants to join me. Okay, the next.
Zoning amendments.
So what I wanna do is just. Get you to start to think about where we have to go for twenty twenty-four. We do have a lot of zoning amendments that are. Happening, not, you know, studies and and work being done on our zoning regulations, our um general. General bylaws, um subdivision rules and regulations. So we put every, remember we put everything on hold kind of just because the master plan was coming. I think it's time for us to now to pick that up again and work in uh, you know, tandem with. The master plan process so that everybody's aware, look, as as we're starting to identify. What's gonna happen? We wanna have these bylaws ready for twenty twenty-four. So I don't know whether the planning board would want to, you know. Pick a couple of you to actually do the work with me on it. I can certainly do most of it with. Rick, Rich Maloney is um, our zoning um officer is going to help with it, of course. Um, he and I can start to draft it. I have a lot of work done already from what we did with um. The climate resiliency piece, um, where we had the consultants working with us on it. So we've got a lot done, but.
Can I ask Dan to report out on the meeting on the estate zone? Just as an example of something we might consider.
So that was, we had a meeting, um, and Peter was there as well on March second with um. Rick Ireland, I think this grew out of a meeting in a box where comments were made. Joanne Fraschello was there. Um, and Rick is affiliated with New England Bio Labs and he was talking about the process they went through. In Ipswich where they cited their facility, um, and Ipswich has something called the Great Estates. Bylaw or overlay district. And so we had a discussion about, are there parcels in Wenham that might. Fit something like this and what is the size? I think the size in Ipswich was sixty acres. Or or something. It doesn't necessarily have to be sixty acres, but that's what um, the Ipswich uh site was.
Excuse me, Dan, could you explain what the program is first before we?
Yeah, it well, it's basically creating an overlay zoning district that might encourage commercial development. Um, in town, right? So for the, for bigger parcels that might have. I guess formerly been estates, they don't necessarily have to have been estates, but um. In it, you know, we talked about iron rail and the benefit of iron rail is that it's town owned right now. Um, so that that clears a lot of hurdles out of the gate. It's, it's, you know, basically, what do you wanna do with it as a town? But there are other parcels in town and um, I think Margaret circulated a list of the fifty biggest. Lots or uh in town with, was that a color coded? It was kind of hard to match up.
There's, there's a map, there's a map in the open space plan that identifies all the major. The large parcels that are out there like Streeter and.
So we spent a lot of time in talking about this Streeter property, which is off of Maple.
Which is across the street from my house.
Yeah, it's, it's the corner of Maple and ninety-seven. And it goes back some. Remember how many acres, but it's.
And it's, it's hard to tell that it's even there from, from Maple Street because it's set far, so far back, so. I mean, now obviously that's a privately owned parcel, but. That, you know, if you looked at the site that in the maps that Margaret was showing us for doing the bio labs and that, I mean, that's. One area that might be a potential for this kind of overlay district because. You, you could put something in there and you wouldn't even know it's there.
Right, and part of the, the beauty of this kind of district is you can shape it, you know, because it's. The town creates it, so you can, you can demand a buffer so that you can't see it. You can demand. Um, you know, that a certain amount be preserved as open space. You can, you know, you can write it that way so that you're preserving the character. While still enabling, you know, something other than residential development. It doesn't have to be commercial. It could be an office. It could be mixed use. It could be a variety of different things.
Right, and I, you know, I think we've got a lot of balls up in the air right now with the MBTA thing with the master plan. I know that every time we talk about this. You know, we talk about what's zoned commercial in town and it's really, it's basically what the Haley property off of Main Street. And, you know, we are, I think. Ninety-nine point seven percent zoned residential. Do I have that right? Is zero point three percent commercial? And then everything else is single family residential with a one acre restriction on it.
Exactly, and that's the one acre restriction is, you know, septic related. So, I mean, that is the other, the other constraint on developing something using any kind of fun. Innovative overlay zone is the, the limitation on sewer system, you know, just what can you do?
Our one acre is solely septic related, um, but whatever, be that as it may. You know, this is what I mentioned earlier that we should consider. Pushing some things forward, uh, or at least proposing some things for zoning amendments like. Do we wanna create some overlay districts or, you know, I'm not sure if um. You know, maybe we wanna have a public hearing on that uh at some point in the process, but. Start to make, we might wanna consider starting to make some changes in advance of the master plan being finished, like.
Just based on what we're hearing from public comment.
Right, because you know, MBTA is pushing all the uh our communities to put in this, you know, multifamily. Housing in, you know, there's a lot of pushback on the MBTA. I don't think it's all directed at multifamily housing. I think it's directed. Mostly at the, you know, one shoe fits all approach for every MBTA community, but. Do, so do we want to start looking at, what are ways for us to open up zoning so that it's not ninety-nine point seven percent? Single family, one acre residential here.
I agree. Do we all agree on this?
And I think that was my point that this is where we now start, have to start doing this. What kind of overlays are we thinking? Do we wanna create some commercial districts? Um, do we wanna rezone some properties that we think? These really are great for, for commercial and um, you know, but that's what we need to, and have these ready for town meeting in twenty twenty-four.
Right, so this is an ongoing conversation that we're gonna need to have.
Yeah, yep, so.
Too many people are speaking at once.
Yeah, to Rick's question, does anybody disagree with this? I I say no, we need these overlays. And I think the conclusion of the meeting that we had with Rick. Was that uh, the way we are currently zoned, we're basically saying no. To anybody who has any commercial.
Based on our last master plan.
So we need to step forward and change that so that we, at least we, we do create some zones.
I mean, I think we should try and, you know, based on what we're hearing in some of the. Comments that we're getting in and certainly is consistent with the comments that we hear uh all the time about the tax rate, right? You have to, something we can do to make, to ease that burden a little bit. Or suggest, I mean, we're not gonna do the development, obviously, but to set it up so that the burden could be eased a little bit. I think that. That would be long term, very beneficial.
Agreed.
Can we move on?
I just wanna give, uh, David's hands up and then I'd like to speak.
Okay.
I just had a quick question, which is. I understand the power of the overlay district and it certainly makes sense to me. If somebody like a New England Bio Labs were to come along and say, hey, we've. Reached this, we wanna purchase this land off of Maple, it's gonna be setback and we realize it's not zoned for this. We wanna variance in terms of the use. I mean, you can approach it that way as well, right? I mean, you can always.
No.
No?
We can't give use variances. There's, they're not allowed, use variances, aren't allowed at all. In Wenham as part of our bylaw. What, what we would do though, David, if some, if someone approached us and said, we wanna build this. Then you start to work with them to create the, the, the district, which is what they did in Ipswich. Ipswich didn't come up with this and then Bio line, Bio Gen or whatever, Bio Labs came, Bio Labs approached them. And then they came up with this district, um, which is what we did on the um, the senior housing overlay district that we have in Wenham. That was created in response to an applicant, well, you know, discussion with someone who wanted to. Turn the Mullen property into senior housing. So if, if New England Bio Labs came, we couldn't allow them to build anywhere because we, we don't have. An area that allows for that use.
So Margaret, how are, wh- what is the procedure then for, for the businesses that exist or what was the procedure?
We have a business district, so wherever you see a business in Wenham. Um, that's, it's either in the business district, which is in the downtown, and we have a, a list of regulations that apply to that district. Or they were here before zoning.
Okay, so like. Sports stop, right?
Before zoning.
They're pre-zoning?
Yeah.
Okay. I wasn't sure if that was a special permit mechanism.
Yeah, my only comment, when you said greatest states project, um, I connected that immediately to the Hamilton version. Of trying to save the greatest states, which is just the opposite of what, what this Ipswich plan is, right?
So I don't know where the terminology comes from. I just.
I just wanna be sure that when you, when you, we try to find the right term for it, because I think people. Might just turn off to it and say, oh, they're trying to protect that land again. And it's really the opposite, trying to make better use of it.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, it's a sort of a term of art that is used for these larger parcels because they. Often are estate proper, properties that are being developed, but.
Right, but in Hamilton, it's difficult to break them up. And we're, we're trying to do the opposite.
Right, no, I understand that.
Right.
So one last question, if I may. Sorry, I'm just curious about this. So let's say that there was a parcel of land in New England Bio Labs said, hey, we wanna do this. And then we hit the brick wall of um, you can't give a variance on the use. Can it be put before the town at a special town meeting or a town meeting for them to give like a special? District or a special use variance essentially?
Yeah, and that's actually how it would work, David, that you, we would develop. The overlay district, a bylaw, zoning bylaw that would allow for this use. And then you, you usually will call a special town meeting if it's worth it to the community to do that.
So for example, up on Ipswich in one A, if New England Bio Labs were to disappear, that couldn't turn into um. A strip mall.
Uh, it could turn into anything that is allowed in that zone. So there's an, the, the difference between the overlay. There's an underlying district everywhere and Wenham is all underlying residential. So if you have an overlay that says if you, you can do this, this overlay um, allowed use. In, on land that is, that fills the criteria. Say you have to have twenty acres. It's gotta be. Like within twenty, within a half mile of the, of the uh train station, whatever it is, it's that overlay. And if a use happens there and then they go away, the land is still allowed to do whatever is on, in the under, the underlying district.
So can I, can I just add one thing that we're, we're talking about this? The commercial aspect of these overlay districts, right? Because I know that's a topic, but. As we get into this process, I think we should look at more than just that. So, you know, over, I don't know if it has to be an overlay or maybe just rezoning, Margaret. Where if we wanna do a different kind of residential in town, that is less than forty thousand square feet. We, I mean, we ought to consider that too.
So I wanna let you know too, we, that could be addressed in our subdivision rules and regulations. That, and it was at one time, we open space residential district, you know, so that you can. Have more open space and a greater density allows for greater density. So those are things that we definitely wanna look at. To, to allow for greater density residential. Um, you know what I can do? I will put together the list of, you know, a wish list, right? Of, would be great if we had this kind of a district. Wouldn't be great if we had these uses and things. Um, we can put that all together and then start to add to it. You know, look at it, how do we get that done? Are those things that we want? Um, you know, based on some of the comments that we're getting from master plan too. As well as the information that we've received of the, when we worked with the consultant on climate resilience and. You know, all that stuff that we're gonna have to incorporate.
That sounds like a great idea, Margaret.
Yeah. Get a wishlist together, you know?
That would be great. So is the thought that you would do that for our next meeting?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I'll do it for April.
Why, we might have the wishlist and MBTA scenarios all in one meeting.
Well, those that, the MBTA scenario is gonna be part of the wishlist. And then we'll bring it to the public and see what they say.
Awesome.
Great.
Great.
Does that, does that do it for us, Margaret? Meeting minutes?
From February ninth. I think everyone's had a chance to.
I personally have not looked at them because I've been on vacation, so. Um, I'm gonna have to defer to others for thoughts on that.
I moved that we accept the meeting minutes of the two nine twenty-three planning board meetings.
Just say as edited because I sent. I changed a Miss Clay to a Mr. Clay. You're welcome.
Yeah, you want that edited, Peter. I imagine. I need a second.
Second. Sorry, I wasn't here. I shouldn't be able to do that. Sorry.
I think Dan has been the second, so all in favor?
Clay says yes.
Anderson?
Hi. Woodland abstains.
Okay. Other matters is not perceived by the chair. I do not have any other matters that I was gonna ask about the greatest states. Sorry for the noise.
The game started?
Oh, the game started at seven, believe me.
I will offer up that um, Margaret, you made a soft tender. I would like to be a part of that um, zoning. Bylaws revision effort if there's not a mad rush and I get left behind. I, among the others, I would like to do that. I think that's interesting work.
That would be great, David. Thank you.
I'd be happy to as well, Margaret, as long as we're not dealing with kennels and. That level of detail.
All right, wait a minute. Let me scratch that off my wishlist.
You mean, you don't wanna, you don't wanna fifty acre, you don't wanna fifty acre kennel farm?
You, you were not on the board at that point. Oh my god.
That was awesome.
I promise I won't, I won't even put the word in.
All right, great.
All right, that's it.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn if there's no other.
The second.
All in favor? Week says aye.
Aye.
Place is yes.
Pascarillo?
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks guys.
Thank you so much.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.